Okay, good evening, folks. Time is 5:02. We're going to start the planning board meeting of November 20th, 2025. I'd like to call the meeting to order. First order business, introducing planning board members and staff. To my far right, Steve Yost, Beverly Bookin, our vice chair Jane Ramsen. I'm Rick Noonan, the chair. Greg Catamatory, Doug Cook, and then Eric. First, under A and R's, site plan reviews, preliminary subdivision plans, and amendments, we have an A and R submitted by Daniel Fonzie to divide 35 Massasoit. Royalty assessors map 231 lot 17. We have representation here.
Hello, Aiden Church, Seaside Legal Solutions, address 123 Main Street, Gloucester. So, we had a second site visit on Monday where the remaining members of the board came out and got to see the site. At this site visit, we had had our engineer and surveyor stake out the lot lines along with the proposed location of the structure and the driveway access. So, I thought that this was particularly helpful because the driveway access ended up being considerably further down Massasoit than we had originally discussed at the first site visit where we were lacking those stakes and markers. So, pretty much the access where it's located now incorporates the existing paved portion of the lower portion of Massasoit Road. So, just to reiterate what we've talked about the past couple of meetings, we do have frontage on Massasoit Road, which has been approved by the planning board in previous A and Rs back in 2014. We have sufficient access over that lower portion that's currently paved, and we have sufficient lot area with over 50,000 square feet there. So, I would respectfully request for the board's endorsement of the same R.
Thank you. Any questions? I think we've all had a chance, yeah. I appreciate that second visit opportunity. So, I did take a drive out independently, and that made a big difference. So, thank you for that. Questions, comments? I did forget to mention that David Rosen is joining us remotely this evening, so. You want to take a stab at a motion?
I move that we approve the A and R plan to divide 35 Massasoit Road.
Stuck at that?
So, map 231 lot 17 is amended. So, I have a motion by Jane Ramsen, seconded by Steve Yost. I need a roll call vote, please.
Member Noonan?
Yes.
Member Ramsen?
Yes.
Member Bookin?
Yes.
Member Cook?
Yes.
Member Rosen?
Yes.
And member Yost?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. So, next on the agenda this evening is an A and R plan submitted by Western Real Estate to divide property at 354 Main Street, assessors map 51, and lot 57. I don't know if we have representation here this evening. Seeing none.
Yes.
Oh, he is.
Steve is there. He's just pulled in.
Okay. There he is, Steve.
Here, members of the board, for your record, my name is Steve Stepinski from Armac Engineering. You recall, we had a site walk. Previously, there was proposed two lots in the back behind the gas station, one lot with the gas station, so a total of three lots. As a result of the previous planning board action, we've revised the plan to eliminate those two lots on Scott Street and indicate the remaining land after the gas station is subdivided to be not a building lot. And the idea is that once development is proposed on that backland, they would come to the board with the construction details, et cetera, associated with it. So, the purpose of it is to, of this plan is to subdivide the gas station from the site, and the remaining land would be subject to future planning.
Thank you, Steve. Any further discussion?
It's declared unbuildable as part of the separation? I mean, why isn't it just a vacant lot?
It's designated unbuildable because they're not requesting any determination of frontage and access for the rear lot at this time.
Which does not void someone coming in with a plan that might need must.
Correct.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other discussion?
I move that we approve the A and R plan to divide property at 354 Main Street, assessors map 51 lot 57.
Second.
We have a motion by Jane Ramsen, seconded by Beverly Bookin. I need a roll call vote, please.
Member Noonan?
Yes.
Member Ramsen?
Yes.
Member Bookin?
Yes.
Member Cook?
Yes.
Member Rosen?
Yes.
And member Yost?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Steve. Hey, so, we're going to take the next item under A and Rs at the, in the public hearing section. So, we're going to move on to subdivision plans and public hearings. So, just one second. I'm going to take things out of order again. So, in accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law 40A, Section 5, in the Gloucester zoning ordinance, Section 1.11, the Gloucester Planning Board will hold a public hearing to consider following proposed zoning amendments. We're moving on to item B on the agenda. Amend the Gloucester zoning ordinance, Section 6, definitions by amending the definition structure. Anything constructed or erected, the use of which requires a fixed location on the ground or attachment to something located on the ground. Structures, including buildings, mobile homes, billboards, fences that exceed six feet in height, swimming pools, tanks, or the like, or part thereof, boundary walls and fences not to exceed six feet in height, are not considered to be structures by adding in flag poles under 30 feet in height. Hmm, that was a mouthful. So, I'll open the public.
So, now, I'm recognizing we're in a little bit of a pickle. This is to be presented by the building commissioner, who is not present yet.
Okay.
And the other petition was to be presented by Councilor Worthingley. So, there's a charm. We could move on to the third public hearing and then circle back. Okay.
Would it be useful if I just had some minor grammatical comment about it at this point?
I think we should probably wait until we open it. Yeah.
I totally have that comment. I'm having a problem with it.
Okay. Okay, so, let's move on to item number two. So, in accordance with the requirements of Mass General Law 40A, Section 9 and 11, and the zoning ordinance, the city of Gloucester, Section 1.5.5, 1.8.3, and 5.1.0, the Gloucester Planning Board to consider a special permit application for a watershed protection overlay district filed by Seaside Legal Solutions on Upper Banjo Pond on behalf of Upper Banjo Pond LLC to permit a 25-unit residential development, Fund 60, 158R, and 154A, assessors map 218, lots 38, 39, and 46. So, this is a continued public hearing. The floor is here as attorney.
Thank you, once again, for the record. My name is Joel Favazza. I'm an attorney at Seaside Legal Solutions, 123 Main Street, here on behalf of Upper Banjo LLC. I'm here today with Vito Gigoloni, who is the principal of that LLC. The quick update, if you have a chance to read through the shared drive, is that after a lot of work by the planning department, the engineering department, and the Commonwealth Department of Environmental Protection, we were able to do two pieces of investigation. One was to determine that the watershed around Fernwood was not, in fact, Zone A watershed, it's just an emergency watershed. And that has some regulatory components of what you can do inside of a Zone A watershed versus other watersheds like this. The second thing was that we were able to actually pull out, and I thank Mr. Catamatory for this, we actually found the original watershed protection overlay district map, and were able to scale out the line onto the plan and show the true line of where the watershed protection overlay district lands on this property. The engineering department had posed, I think it was six conditions. We provided a written response, agreeing either outright, I think, to two of them, and then agreeing in concept to the other four with some minor requested changes. The engineering department was kind enough to respond prior to tonight's meeting. I believe they accepted almost all of our requested changes, with the exception of whether or not certain lots in the WPOD would be allowed to have accessory structures beyond the original single family that gets produced. And I talked to my client, and we're willing to, we're not going to die on the hill, if the engineering department is okay with the other changes we've requested to their conditions, then we are okay with that last one that they were not willing to accept as a change. That being said, I believe you have before you a set of draft conditions recommended from the city staff that would protect the interests of the watershed protection overlay district. And I would ask that you grant a special permit for the, sorry, water protection overlay district special permit for this project, as well as amend the original cluster development special permit to fall in line with these revised plans. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Favazza.
I read most of the conditions, I read the conditions, and I, I think they look great. I mean, I don't know what everybody else on the board feels. I do have a suggestion for the condition number one, which you were going back and forth on, because it says, as the engineering department, the last version that they sent back, it says, "No accessory structure shall be permitted within any portion of a lot within the WPOD." And then it says, "No accessory uses shall be permitted, blah, 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 without first obtaining a special permit." So, I was thinking it might be more efficient, and also better for you, if we said, "No accessory structures or uses shall be permitted within any portion of any lot of the WPOD without first obtaining a special permit." Does that make sense?
Something a wise amendment to me.
Is everyone else good with that? Do you see what I'm getting at?
Sure.
Yeah. Other than that, I don't have any issues with any of the other conditions, other than understand you need to submit a new plan set, so some of this can be verified.
So, the plan set that you received, the initial application in August, contains the sheets regarding the changes to the cluster development special permit, and there was a full sheet that shows the out, the limits of the WPOD was submitted with this last round of supplemental those conditions. If you'd like, we could have the entire plan set repopulated with that red line across on every sheet. Otherwise, you have all the plans in front of you you would need to make a vote tonight.
Greg, do you have everything you need?
I think that would be wise to take the, you know, the other layers off, make that very clear. And if there could be one clean sheet that shows in the lotting plan, the overlay district as well, because I think we'll have additional conditions relating to making sure that that's referenced in the chain of title, as well as in the homeowners association.
That's fine. Thank you.
Any other comments?
No. Okay, everyone get comfy. I have a, oh, sorry.
Yes.
Oh, sorry about that.
Right. So, this, again, is a continued public hearing. So, if anybody would like to come and speak in favor and/or against the overlay district that we're contemplating, please feel forward. Yeah. Camille, thank you.
Hello? Camille Vasenti, 158 Essex Ave. And I apologize, I didn't see the most recent submission from engineering, because I think it was fairly recent. And so, some of these may not be relevant, because engineering has accepted their conditions. However, I would still like to state my comments, and one in particular, which I think is relevant, which is the extent of the watershed district. So, the recent engineering memo is evidence that building in our watershed is not a minor issue. They listed six conditions to protect our drinking water resource. Yet, the applicant response letter requested significant reduction in scope to those conditions, which would put our drinking water at risk. And I have a few concerns, and one that the applicant argues, one is that the applicant argues that an older, less accurate watershed map used to determine the bounds of the watershed district per 5.10.3A. Yet, I was told, quote, "The official watershed maps are quite dated on file here at our offices. They were produced from aerial photo interpretation from decades ago, and the best current approximation can be found on Mass Mapper, DEP Tributaries, Dierwood." This is the exact delineation the applicant highlighted as the watershed in this first public hearing meeting. While 5.10.3 defines the bounds with an outdated map, it also defines the bounds with words. The district, quote, "Includes all lands lying adjacent to watercourses and surface water bodies which contribute to the city's water supply. With better technologies, we have a more accurate delineation of what land, quote, 'contributes to our city's water supply.'" Further, 5.10.3B states that, quote, "Where the bounds delineated are in doubt or in dispute, the burden of proof shall be upon the owner to show where they should be properly located. Has the owner requested the city engage a specialist to determine more accurately the watershed location? In some conditions, should apply to the best current watershed maps, not outdated maps from decades ago." My second concern was in regards to the impervious surface area limited in condition 1. The applicant noted that structures are illustrative and did not specify building footprints, but GZO 5.10.6A3 requires that the amount of impervious surface area proposed for the lot, and I didn't see the total impervious surface area on this plan set. The applicant must provide the total amount of impervious surface area, and then engineering can recommend this as a maximum, whereas they had not wanted to have a limit to what the impervious surface area can be. And this third concern, which I think has been addressed by engineering, but at the time, I did not see that, so I'll just read it anyway, that condition 3 stated, "A permanent boundary line should be established along the rear of parcels 10 through 15 corresponding to the erosion control line," excuse me, designated and maintained as protected open space. Yet, again, the applicant pushes back and requested to move that boundary to the rear of the property lines, because it would be unfair to property owners. But engineering had been explicit that protected open space should correspond to the erosion control line, not the rear property lines, and that's a 60 to 30 to 60-foot difference. And since private lots in open space are mutually exclusive in a cluster, those parcels must be reconfigured or eliminated. And in a revised plan, then, property owners could use their backyards while still protecting land near the resource. The watershed should inform the entire project design. The conditions from engineering are evidence of this. Condition 3 means parcels needed to be configured with a new requisite open space, and that's a major amendment per 5.9.11A and D. And per GZO 1.8.5, modification to a special permit is allowed, provided the interests of the neighborhood and the city are not impaired. And the interests of the city would be impaired if all these engineering recommendations are not upheld, and we aren't using a contemporary map. These facts justify that the whole cluster should be open to a public hearing, and then all those conditions would be in purview even outside of the watershed, which is that how the project should have been presented years ago, had the watershed not been mistakenly omitted from the original cluster application. If this project can't meet the six conditions, a special permit should not be granted. So, in closing, I ask if the purpose of the watershed is to best promote the health and safety of our community by protecting our drinking water, do you grant leniency to a high-density development and rely on an outdated watershed map? Or do you rely on the expertise of our engineers, hold the recommendations, using the broader, more updated watershed map that is stated in our ordinance with words? Thank you.
Thanks, Camille. Anybody like to speak for or against the overlay district that we're talking about this evening? Have anybody online with hands up? No. Like an opportunity?
Yeah, just to really quickly respond, you know, for what it's worth, I think we can address one of Mr. Vasenti's concerns. The modification to the request about the boundaries at the rear of the property, we're not to move the boundaries further back. We just wanted to be clear that these granite posts would be at the side lot line, still in line with the erosion control lines. We're not moving any further away from the houses or any further toward the watershed. We just wanted to make sure that we didn't have to drive a post in the middle of someone's backyard. You can do one on the left, do one on the right. You can stand at one and look at the line going down the lots to see where this line is going. We did not request, and the engineering department did not suggest that we should be allowed to put the line at the back of the lots. The line will still be where engineering wanted it. We just want to make sure the stone bounds could be at the side lot line intersections along that erosion control line. Otherwise, again, I think the defining map is a defining map, and the city of Gloucester later wants to adopt a new map to control the WPOD. They're free to. But at this point, the applicant is not seeking to challenge it. And I will say, you know, in all honesty, we've had our engineer look at it. It's kind of a, be careful what you wish for, because we think even the red line that came off the WPOD plan probably is incorrectly thinking through aerial photography that certain patches of the backland is going to flow into Fernwood, when the more recent topography shows it flows the other way. That being said, in the interest of getting out of here without having to redraw this map, we're willing to accept that we may have more of our project subject to these regulations than an accurate map would show, and that's why we've chosen not to challenge it, which is why there is no need to hire experts. You're allowed to just accept the map as is, which we have decided to do.
Thank you. Discretion to the chair. Camille, if you could keep your comments short.
Camille Vasenti, 158 Essex Ave, for the record. So, if the open space delineation is still going directly through the lots, I argue that open space and lots are not, are mutually exclusive, and that this plan needs to be redesigned, because you have houses that are mere feet from places that cannot have any alteration to vegetation. So, if there's a tree overhanging or right next to their house, they would not be able to move it, that this project needs to be designed, redesigned, so that open space is separate from the lot. Otherwise, we're dealing with 5,000-square-foot lots here that cannot touch their backyard with any, by altering it in any way. And this doesn't make any sense. It's not, open space and the lots are two different things, and the whole project needs to be redesigned. Thank you.
Hi, Joel. Go ahead.
Hi. Just to make sure we're clear, this thing, this, these bounds do not shrink the lots. That'd be very clear in the HOA agreement and the deed for these lots in specific. And when they're shown, you'll say, hey, listen, you know, your lot goes, you see those granite bounds, using a fake number, your lot goes about 35 feet further, but your lawn mowing stops at these granite bounds, as is your neighbor to the left, as is your neighbor to your right. That's on page 22 of the HOA. You know, like, this, this is a control that does happen on private lots and other developments that is enforced easily through the HOA and then through, if there's violations, through the city staff. So, this is not shrink the lot size, this is not require redesign, just requires, as has been requested, clear language in both the overall HOA governing the development and the specific deeds that'll be for these specific lots.
Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none, except the motion to close the public hearing, or the public comment period, I'm sorry.
So, move, or request, I request that we close the public hearing period.
I have a motion, I need a second, please.
Second.
So, motion by Beverly Bookin to close the public comment period, seconded by Steve Yost. Roll call vote, please.
Member Noonan?
Yes.
Member Ramsen?
Yes.
Member Bookin?
Yes.
Member Cook?
Yes.
Member Rosen?
Yes.
And member Yost?
Yes.
Further discussion on the overlay district, and then we need to wrap in the amendment as well.
So, can I just clarify what we're doing? So, this, reading the watershed protection overlay district, it's Section 5.10. We are, we are granting a special permit? Okay. And the special permit criteria are listed here. So, I, I hear your comments, Camille, and I, I got confused when you started talking about open space, because I didn't believe we were talking about open space. We were talking about the watershed protection overlay district. And I do believe that the criteria for the watershed protection overlay district has been met, especially with the blessing of the city engineer and the conditions. I think you were also referring to whether this was a major amendment, maybe? And based on my reading of that, also, I, I did not think it was, but I could see that that was open to interpretation. So, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I am comfortable with the conditions that the applicant and the city engineer have negotiated. But does anyone else have anything to add?
David? Do you have a comment, David?
I don't. Sorry.
Okay, thank you. And we're all looking for that mute button. Any further discussion?
Greg, are you fully comfortable that the conditions of approval will address the balance we're trying to achieve here, which is protecting environmental interests but also promoting housing?
Yeah, I think the engineering department, in consultation with Health Department staff, which they're, they have the ability to provide a joint memo. So, there's some interest that would otherwise maybe be addressed by the Health Department that are within this, in particular, having the monitoring before, during, and after, so that there's really a sense to be able to see if there's been any impact and act on it if there, if there, if there is. And the other conditions, again, are, are putting in safeguards and limitations that the ordinance provides that can be placed on potential future activity. And having that monumented in the chain of title within the HOA, I think is, you know, has been the approach. It's a strong approach to make sure that everyone's aware of what they can and they cannot do. I understand, you know, the concern about the delineation. We are aware of that. We have a number of data sources that we looked at, can, can kind of comparing them all together. I think there's a little bit of a give and take in what we have delineated from the, the record delineation that's referenced in the ordinance versus what's the state has provided in terms of an approximation, as well as data that we have from more recent topography. So, I think the lots in question are fairly consistent in what's been restricted in, in those lots that are on, on the outside of the loop. The area where there may be some, some, you know, kind of modulation in, in the line between the various sources are probably those lots that are within the interior of the cul-de-sac. But from the post-drainage perspective, all of those areas will be draining outside of, of the Fernwood watershed. This has certainly been a educational and interesting exercise, given that when the city enacted the watershed protection overlay district decades ago, a number of different water sources were identified with, with requiring a special permitting process and also limitations of what could occur in them. But they are not all active water supplies, and they're not treated the same from the state's perspective as well. So, that was, that was the learning moment there in terms of what type of regulations would apply, particularly to Fernwood Lake, which is not currently utilized. But yet, you know, we do have But yet, you know, we do have protection for some of these resources should they ever be used in the future, and they would have additional protections in the future if they were utilized. So I think the engineering department took a pretty hard look at this rare occurrence. The city owns most of the lands around its water supplies. There are a few instances like this, as well as others, where that's why this permitting process is in place. And it's not a prohibition on activity, but the ability to review and limit and put in safeguards to protect the watersheds.
Your comments have reassured me that there's an appropriate balance here between environmental protection and housing production. Thank you.
I agree with that last statement. I had just a question about, maybe you said it at the beginning, what the final disposition of your comments on the agreed-in concept comments in this document?
The most recent version of conditions as outlined by the second engineering memo is what we are agreeing to. So with Ms. Remson's one changed the first one. So anything we agreed to in concept, the engineering department has come back, either incorporated our suggested changes or incorporated most. And whatever the engineering memo says now with Ms. Remson's amendment would be the conditions that we'd look to see on the permit.
So I'll accept a motion to close the public hearing. Thank you.
Okay. Again, get comfy because I have to read a lot. So I move that we approve the watershed protection overlay district special permit submitted by Upper Banjo LLC for the construction of portions of a cluster development within the Fernwood Lake watershed at 160, 185R and 154A Essex Avenue, assessors map 218, lots 38, 39, and 46, contingent upon the review and approval of a final decision incorporating the six conditions as amended and referred to in today's November 19 memo from Dana Martin, city engineer. Consistent with the recommendations of the city engineer and accompanied by a revised plan set that includes all engineering details and clearly delineates the lots and areas subject to the conditions and limitations. Such restrictions and limitations shall also be required to be included in the Homeowners' Association documents and the chain of title of affected properties. So I know we also need a motion for a minor modification of the current special permit. So is that, do we vote on this one first? Okay.
I have a motion by Jane Ramson. I need a second, please.
Second.
A second by Beverly Bookin. I need a roll call vote, please.
Member Noonan?
Yes.
Member Bookin?
Yes.
Sorry. Member Remson?
Yes.
Member Cook?
Yes.
Member Rosen?
Yes.
And member Yost?
Yes.
Okay. I further move to approve the minor modification of the issued cluster development special permit issued to Upper Banjo LLC for a cluster development at 160, 185R and 154A Essex Avenue, assessors map 218, lots 38, 39, and 46, contingent upon the review and approval of a revised decision incorporating references to a revised plan set, which will include a relocated connection to the off-site trail system to the southwest of the locus, and a new sheet depicting lots subject to restrictions and limitations associated with the watershed protection overlay district. Such restrictions and limitations shall also be required to be included in the Homeowners' Association document and chain of title of affected properties.
I have a motion by Jane Ramson. I need a second, please.
Second.
Second by Beverly Bookin. Roll call vote, please.
Member Noonan?
Yes.
Member Remson?
Yes.
Member Bookin?
Yes.
Member Cook? Yes.
Member Rosen?
Yes.
And member Yost?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, we're going to get back on track here. I'll just read this back into the record. In accordance with the provisions of the Master and Law 40A, Section 5, in the Gloucester zoning ordinance, Section 1.11, the Gloucester Planning Board will hold a public hearing to consider the following proposed zoning amendments. This is letter A on our agenda this evening, so amend the Gloucester zoning ordinance by amending the Gloucester zoning map by changing the zoning district designation from marine industrial MI to neighborhood business MNB of the following properties. And this is, we're talking about East Main Street here, so number 97, 99, 101, 103, 105, 109, 123, 125, 131, 135, 145, 147, 147R, 149, 151R, 153, 155, East Main Street, and 1, 2, and 5 Norwood Court, and 3A, 6, and 8, and 10 of Avon Court. I'll open the public hearing. Our councillor Worthley is our guide this evening. The floor is yours.
Check 1, 2. Good evening. Thank you for accommodating me. I think, as I mentioned, my daughter is in a play at 7:00. I think I lost her high school, so I appreciate the flexibility in having this early on your agenda. And thank you for the work that you do, not just tonight, but year round. I'd like to make a disclosure before I start. I do not own any property in this area that we're discussing. I'm not related to anybody, although in Gloucester, you never know. But I'm not related to anybody that I know owns property in this area. I don't have a business interest in this area, and I am not representing here, representing anybody in particular as an attorney or in any legal capacity like that. I'm not getting paid to do this. As we all know, the process for changing the zoning code or a map could be initiated by five different ways. Massachusetts Area Planning Council could initiate a zoning change for Gloucester that the Gloucester City Council could undertake. The mayor could initiate one. The planning board can initiate one. Ten residents can sign something, a map to change zoning. And then again, because before the city council, an individual city councillor can introduce a zoning change. When I served in the city council 25 years ago for two terms, this was a hot topic. How can we have landlocked property require a marine industrial water-dependent use? I was younger and newer and didn't know how to address that necessarily. And then my term ended. When I get back in the city council three years, three and a half years ago, I start up a conversation, engaged Catherine Glenn, who is the regional director for coastal zone management, and I asked her the same question. And she had said, well, the city of Gloucester asked Coastal Zone Management to do a deep review of the designated port area in 2013. She shared with me a report, which I've shared with members of the planning board. Hopefully, you've received it. And after their extensive review, they determined, the state of Massachusetts determined, that marine industrial use and keeping the DPA in this area was not compliant, it wasn't a compatible use. So they led the process to remove the designated port area from this section of East Main Street. To be clear, no fisherman is losing a dock. No potential dock is going to be lost. No potential water-dependent use will be lost because all of the properties in this proposal are landlocked. So this will not require anybody to do something different with their property, but it will give them more choices. So right now, all of those properties are noncompliant pre-existing uses. So minor changes would require getting exemption from the city council for marine industrial use. Why would we, same question, why would we require marine industrial use for landlocked properties? So this here is a proposal before you, seeking your recommendation. This recommendation, if favorable, well, actually, either way, would go to the city council's planning and development committee. They will take up this and have a public hearing before the city council. And my guess is it would not be done before this year started, has ended, but I want to get the process started while I still could as a city councillor. I initiated this in May, and it got a little tied up in legal review before we got it to the point where everyone feels like this is done the right, proper way. And that's the presentation. I'd be happy to answer questions on why we would try to remove landlocked property from requiring marine industrial use, but I think it is pretty intuitive and hope that you will give it a favorable recommendation. Thank you.
So I'll just provide a couple of comments, and I'm really looking for the direction of the board of what you might want additionally for information. Back in the timeframe of 2017, a couple of years after this area was removed from the designated port area, there was an exercise to look at the potential options for a different type of zoning in East Gloucester, not only looking at the areas that have a preponderance of residential use, but also if there was something that needed to be distinguished between the marine industrial that was no longer in the designated port area. I would also note that marine industrial zoning is fairly liberal. It's not just industrial uses. There's also commercial uses that are permitted. And after working with Jack Wigan of the Urban Harbors Institute, who had worked on some of the past harbor plans, in that analysis, you know, there was the potential for looking at a rezoning that could introduce neighborhood business. But one of the confounding issues was that many of the lots are very undersized for the district that they would otherwise follow for residential use, which would be the R10 district across the street. So interestingly, until this time, it's been 10 years since the designation was removed, there were not any petitions from a landowner or something of this form until this time. And I appreciate, you know, revisiting the discussion for sure. But it was, it was kind of a, there wasn't really necessarily a path in that, I won't say that there wasn't a path, but that, you know, by changing the designation, which would enable residential uses, many of the lots and structures still had a fair amount of nonconformity associated with them. And there were other concerns about whether or not this would also have ramifications in other areas of our codes, which includes the noise ordinance. There have certainly been a number of issues in the East Gloucester area in particular related to the cold storage facility. And there's a little bit of a lenience for noise generation when you're in an industrial district and adjacent to with the same zoning designation. And if that designation is changed to a business, commercial, or residential district, those limitations are, I'm sorry, the noise generation has additional limitations on it from the industrial perspective to an adjoining district. So I think those are some of the issues that were raised back at that time. And for that reason, there hadn't been a clear path for moving forward with the rezoning.
Thank you, Greg. Well, we have councillor Worthley here. Are there questions for him on how this came about or the, you know, again, a little elaboration on the origin of this council order?
I'd be happy to address that. I think there may be other people here who wants to speak in favor or against that. I don't know what your process is. Like I said, I started a conversation with Catherine Glenn from Coastal Zone Management at a Zoom meeting, and she said, why hasn't the city of Gloucester changed it out of the marine industrial district like they had pushed for to get the DPA removed? And I didn't know. And so I started looking into it. Things take time. Here we are, three years, two and a half years after that, and I wanted to put this forward. When I've gone door to door, when I was campaigning, there are people who live there that I know who said, I can't do anything with my property because it depends on a water-dependent use. And I do appreciate that MI is not just industrial, but it's commercial. There are a number of businesses in the area that do comply with neighborhood business characteristics. If you look, we're really just joining one neighborhood business district to another neighborhood business district, which has marine industrial in the middle of it, which is full of only residents. So it's really, you know, these houses, most of them were built well before the designated port area was established in 1978. So by putting that in there, it made them all noncompliant, and the city also making it marine industrial makes them noncompliant. So yes, they're smaller lot sizes, they would still need some relief, but they wouldn't need relief from the city council on not having a water-dependent use on residential property. I'd be happy to stay here and answer questions. Or are we going right?
Thank you. All right. So this is a public hearing. Why don't we take folks that would like to speak in favor of this proposed amendment to the zoning first? I just ask that you come forward, state your name and address for the record, and hopefully keep your comments to under three minutes, if that's possible. And Louis, yeah, go ahead, just right into the mic, Louis.
My name is Louis Lincotta. I live at 51 Riverside Avenue. I have been in Gloucester for 76 years, two years Uncle Sam, the rest of the time I've been here and in business. And one of the things is, I was on the Fisheries Commission for 15 years, chairman for four. I sat on the Tri-Coastal for three years. I sat on the State Pier Board for four years. And I sat where you people are for six years, on the planning board of the city of Gloucester. And I owned a piece of M1 property on East Main Street, which is now 417, which is now a school, I believe. We call it a school. I tried to get in, but they won't let me. So, and then I owned the property on 103 East Main Street. I don't own it anymore, but I've lived there for 10 years. And in those 10 years, that piece of property next door was used for everything but anything. Old Man Mitchell owned it, he used it for a lobster dump. There would be more trash and more trick. And then you had Unification Church next door. You had Bob Kersey, who lived upstairs in his restaurant, and then he sold his Unification Church. They put four apartments downstairs in the restaurant so they could have some of the people that worked, that lived there. So as far as M1 goes, M1, there are 50 fishing plants now in the city of Gloucester that do not exist. They're right around the fort, and I have them all, I'm not going to name them, but there are 50 of them. And M1 had the restrictions that the banks were not in favor of. So if you didn't, when I was in the shrimp business, the government decided there'd be no more shrimp in the ocean. So we went to the banks, the banks said, we're not going to lend you any money because you can't do anything with your property other than fish-related. Well, I don't know if any of you people, my family have been in the fishing business for, since the turn of the century, and it's gone by the boards. We need to address M1 in a different way. We need to look at pieces of property that are M1 and decide whether they should be there or shouldn't be there. But what is there now, and I have no interest in this, is the right thing to do. The thing is, to allow young people to open a little business, live there, it's a necessity that we need. And that, they're surrounded by everybody else who's an island. So I think it's time that we do go through this whole thing. I mean, I had Hawks next door, we had an Otter Studio, I had Virginia Knaves, I had the Unification Church, we have Captain Joe's. And you go through my back fence and you're walking to Captain Joe's. So, and Captain Joe's family owned that piece of property before it was developed. So everybody's had a chance to do something. So I think at this point, and I want to make one more comment, we have a filtration plant in the city of Gloucester. It was built non-fisheries-related. In other words, it wasn't built so fishing industry could hook up to it. I know, I paid the fines. I believe Gorton's is still on a wave. So in the meanwhile, we're not going to go into secondary, and we're going to say, well, the fishing industry is coming back. Coming back to what? I don't know. But we can't even allow the fishing industry to prosper anymore because of the fact that town is now in noncompliance with the sewage. So we're looking at a catch 22 as the circle goes around. So I believe this time that this piece of property should be changed. I mean, they're an island. There's no need for them to be an island. And like I said, I've done it all, and God bless all of yous, because I sat there for a long time. So if you have any questions for me about the property, I'd be more than glad to answer them. But at this point in time, it's time to relook at all of it, and this one first. Thank you very much.
I brought Frank McCormick, 15 Title Cove Way, Gloucester, Mass. I am writing to support the proposed zoning change for a group of properties along East Main Street from marine industrial MI to neighborhood business NB. The section of East Gloucester has evolved over the years and no longer functions as an industrial area. The properties that The properties in question are completely landlocked, with no access to water or connection to marine uses. They are surrounded by homes and small businesses. And the area already feels like a neighborhood, commercial corridor, than rather an industrial zone. The goal of this zoning change is simple, to connect two existing properties of East Main Street that already zone neighborhood business. They're already zoned. This would create one consistent, continuous stretch of appropriate zoning that reflects how the area is actually used today. Changing these parcels to neighborhood business will not take anything away from Gloucester's working waterfront. None of these properties involved are on the water or support water-dependent activities. This update only affects upland parcels that have no longer been separated from the harbor. Even the state recognized this years ago that this area was suitable for marine industrial operations. This area wasn't suitable for marine industrial operations, based on it wasn't on the water. The Massachusetts Office of Coastal Zoning Management found that East Main Street is made up mostly of residential and small commercial properties and is not well-suited for heavy industrial traffic or large-scale marine operations. This rezoning is a common sense correction that supports small, locally-owned businesses, encourages thoughtful redevelopment, and creates a consistent and functioning zoning pattern for East Main Street. It aligns with the existing character of the neighborhood while maintaining full protection for Gloucester's active waterfront areas. I respectfully urge the planning board and city council to approve this zoning change from MI to NB. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Frank. Anybody else like to speak in favor of this proposed amendment? Hearing none. So next, we'll take public comment on opposition to the proposed zoning amendment. And again, if you don't mind coming forward, state your name and address for the record. You'll have your opportunity to speak.
Kyle Grant, 239 East Main Street, Gloucester, Mass. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I'm a marine business owner, commercial fisherman, and owner of two marine industrial properties in East Gloucester. The proposed zoning change before y'all this evening, in my opinion, is a mistake for the city of Gloucester and the working waterfront which defines this city. This same change would set precedent and greatly undermine the future opportunities available to both commercial fishing industry and the broader shoreside industries, which support both recreational and commercial boating in the city. I'd like to note that of the 24 properties grouped in this rezoning, 19 of them already have an existing residential variance and are currently used for residential purposes. Neighborhood business is not an appropriate rezoning of these lots. Many of these homeowners were not notified of the rezoning and only became aware once this meetings notice was published. I cite Aaron Tuffley, 3A Avon Court, as an example. Three of the other lots are undevelopable land, which leaves two properties that remain in the commercial, marine industrial, without a residential variance. 105 East Main Street, which is a newly constructed building, and also 135 East Main Street. The city of Gloucester zoning ordinance states, and I want to provide this as context, within the marine industrial space, "For all uses requiring a special permit in the marine industrial district and located within 200 feet of the water's edge, the special permit granting authority shall consider the following factors." I cite specifically Section 2. "The proposed use will not, by virtue of its location, scale, duration, operation, or other aspects, preempt or interfere with existing or future development of water-dependent uses of the project's site or surrounding property." I'd like to note that the property at 105, excuse me, is directly next to Cape Van Lobsterman. I recently just landed 1,500 pounds of scallops at Cape Van Lobsterman within the last week. They truck my scallops on a weekly basis to Bedford and take them markets to be sold throughout the year. So far, this season alone, I've moved over 20,000 pounds through Cape Van Lobsterman. It's critical to my business, and I feel that the property being directly adjacent to falls under the purview of the marine industrial nature of the neighborhood. I'd like to also note that this decision will negatively impact future marine-related businesses from having a chance to be located where they are most viable and needed, within the marine industrial zones of the harbor. This is about more than just location to waterfront access. Marine industrial, as was noted earlier, zoning allows businesses to operate with special rights that are not available within the confines of neighborhood business or other zoning districts. Inserting more residential zoning into the space invites the opportunity for conflict between user groups, and I would argue pursuant to Section 518, Item 5, would adversely affect the preservation of water-dependent uses on surrounding properties. Gloucester is America's oldest seaport. I strongly urge you all to deny this change and keep East Gloucester and its waterfront as it is and as it has been. Thank you all for the opportunity, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Kyle.
Hi, good evening. Marcy Prejean, 28 Way Road. I'm the manager of Jamary Land Trust, which is the budding property and one of the properties that was included in this rezoning that I was not made aware of until I saw the public notice for myself. I am definitely against this change. I am happy with my properties supporting marine industrial business. Cape Van Lobsterman is a tenant of mine and really needs the support to keep the marine industrial zoning in place for the future of this city. I also manage other property within the marine industrial zone and waterfront is crucial. In addition, land attached is crucial for its future success of this city. I also have a letter. Unfortunately, Cape Van Lobsterman, due to their busy season, could not be here tonight. She asked me to read a letter from her stating her opposition. If you would allow me to do so, I would like to read that letter.
So I'm going to, you can read it into the record. We did receive it electronically, and it's part of the public record. But go ahead, Marcy.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. So this is to the Gloucester Planning Board. I planned on being in attendance tonight to speak in strong opposition against the proposed amendment to Gloucester zoning map by changing the marine industrial to neighborhood business to the following properties and the ones listed in the notice.
Can you talk into the mic? I can't hear you very well.
I'm sorry. Can you hear me better now? Okay. So I, I'm sorry, I'll begin again. I planned on being in attendance tonight to speak in strong opposition against the proposed amendment to the Gloucester zoning map by changing marine industrial to neighborhood business to the following properties. 97, 99, 101, 103, 109, 123, 125, 131, 135, 145, 147, 147 rear, 149, 151 rear, 153, 155, 125 Norwood Court, 3A, 6, 8, and 10 Avon Court. But I am unable to make it due to a very busy nature of the lobster season during this time of year, in this time of day. For any of you that don't know me, I own Cape Van Lobsterman and the Lobster Restaurant Pub, both located on East Main Street, among those proposed properties up for discussion tonight. I can operate my business due to the marine industrial zoning on the side of East Main Street. I employ over 100 employees, of whom 75% live in Gloucester. On the top of the crew members who support, I'm sorry, who, I'm sorry. On the top of this, I buy live lobsters and seafood from over 100 boats, who I have one to eight crew members, and they can support and support their families through commercial fishing. I can do this because Gloucester has adopted zoning to allow it to hold true to our heritage as America's oldest seaport. These properties were already pulled from the DPA, and the marine industrial zoning has allowed this side of the harbor to maintain a working waterfront. We are currently in a time of, as a city, where we simply cannot afford to lose any more working waterfront. There is currently a need for more, not just for dockage, but offloading capabilities. Changing the current zoning in East Gloucester for a neighborhood that is currently working symbolically with both residents as well as business simply makes no sense, and it would be the wrong move. This would change and would adversely affect the preservation of water-dependent uses on surrounding properties. I urge you strongly to please leave East Gloucester as it is. I have spent endless days following the rules and obtaining proper permits to operate my business. Thank you best, Tessa Brown.
Marcy, would you just put the microphone, it's only on two legs right now, it's going to...
Oh, sorry about that.
Thank you.
I can't see. Okay. In closing, I just wanted to also say that it appears from hearing from somebody else that spoke before me, there are really only two properties that this would really have a major effect. And, you know, I'm all for doing things the proper and right way, and I'm glad I was finally notified of this meeting. But in addition, I also own the other properties on Avon Court and Norwood Court. And there was never brought to my attention that any type of zoning change out of marine industrial was never in the picture for the 15 years that we owned it. So I would strongly advise or plea with you to turn this down and listen to the hard-working fishermen. They have it hard enough, and I hope you continue to support them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak in opposition? There has been addition. I guess at this point, I mean, this is a complex planning issue, and I think that it warrants a fair amount of scrutiny at this point. But if there's comments from the board members before we move along, go ahead.
Well, this is a toughie, because, first of all, marine industrial land is very special in the sense that it can't be replaced elsewhere. You can't move a marine-dependent use into Blackburn Industrial Park, for example. It's got to be on the water. And so I think it was appropriate in the 19, was it 78, when this was imposed, to protect those properties that have access to the port. I also know that in the intervening almost 50 years, that conditions have changed with regard to the fishing industry and the uses that were there in 1978, by and large, are still there. So they've been nonconforming for 50 years. So I can understand the push-pull here. What I don't know is how to interpret the on-the-ground impacts by looking at a map. I really think for starters, we need to do site visit, because I'm not sure, maybe it's not an all-or-nothing kind of thing, like all the properties need warrant being rezoned or don't warrant being rezoned, so that it's, there's just not enough information. I might add, though, that the report from the state is also has some very compelling data in it as well that we need to take into consideration.
I couldn't agree with you more, Beverly. I do think if, I want to take this seriously, but I want to see what the, all of the properties that are being proposed to be incorporated into this district. And maybe there is some merit for some of them, and maybe there isn't. And I want to see for ourselves. Also, I do think there's more recent reports about the designated port area and the harbor plan and so on. And I think we should probably do our homework on those, with those, with, you know, find out as much information as we can about the area. Plus, it's also sounded like many of the people here who spoke were surprised by the proposal. And I think if we keep the public hearing open for another meeting, that we might get to hear from some more residents who would be directly affected by this. So please spread the word out there, with those of you to your neighborhood.
Can I just ask a technical question? Under Massachusetts law, what is the requirements for notifying property owners when we're doing a legislative map change like this, as opposed to an individual property action?
So there's posting requirements at the public hearing stage of the city council. There's a butter notification, as well as through the P and D level. So our first hearing doesn't have direct butter notification.
But does the entire process, does it have opportunities for notifying?
So the planning board sits as a recommending body and holds a public hearing. Then Planning and Development holds a public meeting, but they do have a notification requirement. And then there's a notification requirement at the city council level, who would be the final body to have a disposition on the proposal.
And this is governed by Massachusetts law with regard to how land use actions are noticed. So I think I want people to know that we're following those rules and that there's been established, and there's rhyme and reason to them, but this is early in the process.
I had kind of a technical question about, I'm referring back to the document that was presented from the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs and Office of Coastal Zone Management from February 3, 2014. And its delineations use the terminology "planning units", and that's how it refers to each of these parcels or extensions of property. And this proposal names properties, lots, by street addresses. And just the tech, so just sort of a technical question. Would the ultimate, if the idea is to bring this in line, I won't use the technical word "conformance", but in line with that, would we use those, that terminology or those bounds instead of these property addresses?
So ultimately, if the zoning is changed, it's reflective by the designation on the zoning map, which is similar to what's been shown in the proposal with the changing from the purple to blue. The planning units that were broken out in the harbor planning process back in 2012, 2014 timeframe looked at the East Gloucester area as a planning unit, the kind of industrial core that kind of went from the fish pier to about Harbor Loop and then the Harbor Cove area. So those were areas that were very distinct. They were different in their lot sizes and their uses and their access. And so that's what specifically was petitioned at the time, was the East Gloucester area to be examined. And that's what their determination was. They focused only on the area, not necessarily harbor-wide.
And so can I conclude that?
So one is a state kind of review process and designation of the area. And then locally, a proposal would be for zoning through the designations that we have, or creating a new one. And in this case, proposing to go from marine industrial to neighborhood business.
Okay.
You're okay. Good. David, you have any comments?
I'm definitely in favor of our doing a site visit along East Main Street to get a better sense of what these properties are. One question I have, is there several properties that appear to be on the east side of East Main Street? And why those are actually in the MI zone? Perhaps we'll have a better understanding of that when we see them.
I think we're all on the same page on the site visit. And I think there's, I mean, there's enough properties proposed in this amendment to do a fairly deep dive on the impacts. And I certainly would like to do that homework, as Jane said. So I think at this point, it would be appropriate. Yep. Would you like to make a response, Jeff, or are you standing there anxiously?
First, I want to say thank you. I didn't know if you were going to provide an opportunity for rebuttal. I just want to say, I have great respect for the people who spoke in opposition, and those families. And none of the uses of those properties would be prohibited if this were to be changed to neighborhood business. So this isn't a pushing the fishing industry out. That is the last thing we're trying to do, is providing uses for landlocked properties that could not be in support of the fishing industry. So I just want to make sure that nobody leaves here thinking that Jeff Worthley is trying to get rid of the fishing industry. It's the opposite. It's the opposite of that, and I have a lot of respect for those people. But I also respect the way you want to go about this and do a site visit and be methodical. So I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Good thing Gloucester Times is not here today, Jeff, because that would be the headline. Thank you. So I think we need to, A, schedule a site visit, and B, accept a motion to continue to our next regularly scheduled meeting, December 4.
December 4th, yep. Okay, well, I move that we continue the public hearing to our next scheduled meeting of December 4.
Second?
I have a motion by Jane Ramsen, a second by Steve Yost. I would need a roll call vote, please.
Member Noonan?
Yes.
Member Ramsen?
Yes.
Member Bookin?
Yes.
Member Cook?
Yes.
Member Rosen?
Yes.
And member Yost?
Yes.
Just to clarify, that was to amend the GZO by changing the zoning district designation from Marine Industrial to Neighborhood Business along East Main Street.
Thank you. Okay, so we are now on item B.
Do we want to schedule a site visit now?
We can coordinate at the end of the meeting. So again, I'll just read this into the record. So it's in there formally in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law 40A, Section 5, Gloucester Zoning Ordinance, Section 1.11. The Gloucester Planning Board will hold a public hearing to consider the following proposed amended zoning amendments. Amend the Gloucester zoning ordinance...here's again, do you want to...this grammatical stuff. So amend the Gloucester zoning ordinance, Section 6, definitions by amending definition of structure, anything constructed or erected, the use of which requires a fixed location on the ground or attachment to something located on the ground. Structures including buildings, mobile homes, billboards, fences that exceed six feet in height, swimming pools, tanks, or the like, or part thereof, boundary walls, fences not exceeding six feet in height, are not to be considered structures by adding flagpoles under 30 feet in height. So again, massive thank you, David, for your comment there. That's smug. So we have representation on this amendment, and so it's our...
Yeah, I'm going to recuse myself.
I just want to clarify that the proposal is to add the phrase "and flagpoles under 30 feet in height" to the definition of structure, but it is included in the list of things excluded from the definition of structure, right? Yes.
Super confused.
So a structure will be anything constructed, erected, et cetera. But excluding flagpoles, mobile homes, billboards, fences that exceed six feet in height, swimming pools, tanks, and the like. That is the proposal, to exclude flagpoles under 30 feet in height from the definition of structure.
Rob, the floor is yours.
Hello, my name is Rob Vacari. I'm the building commissioner for the City of Gloucester. So what we are asking is for flagpoles under 30 feet to be excluded as considered as a structure, so they will not need any zoning relief requirements unless they're over 30 feet in height.
That's pretty concise.
Can I ask you a question while you're there? There's...what is the treatment of flagpoles now, and what would happen if this amendment passed, and what would happen to flagpoles over 30 feet in height?
So currently, right now, we don't really have any procedures for flagpoles. If we have flagpoles over 30 feet, then we would consider them to be a structure, and then they would have to meet the accessory structure, accessory structures setbacks. Or, you know, so if they don't meet it, then they would have to get a special permit or a variance from the zoning board.
Got it.
Any questions for Rob before we move on to public comment? From you, Greg? Okay, fair enough. So fairly concise proposal. So I'd like to take any public comment. Folks that are in favor of this amendment, you come and take your name and address for the record, and have your three minutes of fame. So folks that are in favor, we can speak first. Okay, seeing none. Anybody like to make a comment in opposition to the proposed language?
Thank you, Joel Favazza, Seaside Legal Solutions, 123 Main Street. I just want to start on a procedural note. The building commissioner, building inspector's position is inherently adverse to the zoning Board of Appeals. The zoning Board of Appeals exists to overturn his denial of building permits. I think it's procedurally improper for him to be speaking on their behalf. They could have authorized their chair, they could have authorized city legal, but I do not believe the building inspector, whose position is not to be a representative of the zoning board of appeals, and in fact, they sit in opposition to him typically, is the correct person to be advocating on their behalf. Nevertheless, I just want to bring up two points about what considering a flagpole a structure or not a structure does. By making it a structure, yes, it then has to comply with setbacks. But two, it also subjects it to the purview of the Inspectional Services Department. And I can tell you, the brief color on this is not one, but two, one of whom I represented, two different property owners in Gloucester in the last four months have requested enforcement because a neighbor has built a very tall flagpole very close to a property line. Mr. Vacari's position has been they're not structures, they don't need a building permit, they don't need to find setbacks. The zoning board has upheld his decision challenged both times. And what I'm getting to is that you have two separate issues here. One is the purview of Inspectional Services. If you say this is not a structure, then this does not require a building permit. So I can drive a 29-foot-tall pole into my dirt in my backyard, a foot off my property line, and no one's coming out to make sure it's safe? You know, even if I do a ridiculous job, I try and install a flagpole legitimately, no one's making sure I pour at a concrete base appropriately, no one's making sure I'm using the right bolts to connect the pole, no one's making sure the pole is safely secured, because it's not a structure, there's no inspection. If I put lights on it, I don't need an electrical permit, because I'm not wiring a structure. I can just go run an extension cable across my grass up to my flagpole, even though if I wanted to wire my shed, I would absolutely need to have the Inspectional Services Department come out and check my wiring to make sure I was doing this correctly. So that's the one danger you inherently create by saying a flagpole is not a structure. The second one is, yes, a structure has to comply with setbacks. And I would say that if the planning board, zoning board, et cetera, wanted to consider, you could say, hey, listen, a flagpole is an accessory structure, therefore it's under the purview of the Inspectional Services Department. But we're going to give a separate dimensional table for flagpoles, and maybe it's, you know, it must be as many feet off a property line as the flag is wide to make sure that a flag is not blowing across a...like, you could get creative and figure out a way to give it a separate set of dimensional regulations so that it was not treated just as a straight accessory structure while considering it a structure to keep it inspectionally sound. The last point I will make, and I made this to the zoning board previously, is that if you look inside, Section 1.3.2B says that unless you get a variance or a special permit from the zoning board, everything that gets built must be in compliance with not just the GZO, but it must conform in all respects to provisions of, sorry, of the GZO, as well as the state building code and other relevant statute, ordinance, or regulation. And then if you go to Chapter 143, Section 1, which is Mass. General Law enacted by the legislature, which governs inspections of buildings, it has definitions. The definition of a structure per state law is a combination of materials assembled at a fixed location to give support or shelter, such as a building, framework, retaining wall, tent, reviewing stand, platform, bin, fence, sign, flagpole, recreational tramway, mast, radio antenna, or the like. So the state legislature has already told you that a flagpole is a prime example of what a structure is. I don't know who the City of Gloucester is to try and define otherwise. And separately, it's not necessary, because you could achieve the goals of keeping flagpoles as a safe, regulated, inspected structure, and if you want to change where they can be placed and give them more leeway than you would a shed or other accessory structure, you can do that with its own dimensional table. So I'd hope you would not recommend this current revision to the city council, and would instead recommend they go back to the drawing board and try better on addressing the actual problem here. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Favazza. Yeah, it's on. You just really need to speak right into it, okay? Right now, beyond... We just got to flip it on for you. I don't know why Joel keeps turning the thing on.
Here we go.
There we go.
You found it. Karen Tibbetts, 14 Wantson Street, Rocky Neck. I couldn't have said it better than Joel has at this time. But first of all, I'd like to thank all of you for your service, and most of you know that I have worked on Gloucester's Waterways Board for 11 years now, and I'm co-chair of Public Facilities and many, many other boards. So I know that it's very difficult for you to look at all situations and all considerations. So I am in a situation that I am so perplexed that this would even come up, that you would take a 29-foot, let's not call it a flagpole. We know that everyone loves the flag. Everyone I know loves the flag. I hate to even use the word "flagpole" because we're a very patriotic family as well. My son-in-law is a test pilot for the Navy. We're very patriotic people. My husband has a tugboat company in Boston that's moved the USS Constitution since 1984, and so we're extremely patriotic. So when you say "flag," it really, it kind of hurts my heart, too, because I want to honor a flag and a flagpole. But what the building commissioner is saying, that to put a flagpole that's 29 feet as a non-structure, I would like you to come to my yard and look at the wind and look in a floodplain, where if you put a 29-foot flagpole that's not a structure in that area, it becomes a dangerous pole. If you have children, you have dogs, what this means is you can take a 29-foot metal pole, put it close to somebody's property line, dig it in the dirt with no structure, it is not safe. It becomes very, very dangerous. So let's honor our flagpoles. Let's honor our neighbors. Let's keep this reasonable in common sense, that you would consider this a structure to keep it safe for Gloucester citizens. I think a lot of Gloucester citizens don't even understand this proposal, what we're saying. We're not saying anything about a flag. Love the neighbor's flagpole, you know, obey zoning laws, keep it a structure so it's safe for your neighbors, safe for your neighborhood, and it honors our flagpoles. So please consider that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Tibbetts.
My name is Debbie Leander of 29 Shore Road, and I strongly oppose the proposed change regarding the definition of structure by adding verbiage to explicitly exclude flagpoles under 30 feet in height. While I agree the definition is ambiguous, I believe it should be changed to include flagpoles, not exclude them. Doing so makes clear what is already implied, which is that since a freestanding flagpole requires a foundation, it's permanently fixed, and it's typically electrical lit, they are structured. Zoning ordinances provide stopgaps, so when community members can't respect neighbors' rights to quiet enjoyment of their property, the law ensures that they do. I'm sure this issue may seem like a small matter to anyone who's a butters, do not have a looming flagpole on or near a property line, but I can assure you, it is not a small matter. Most egregious is the sound a fixed flagpole makes when it's tall enough. In Gloucester winds and on Shore Road, this is almost constant, all day long, all night long. It can be heard from every room inside, even with windows closed, and every space outside. On some days in summer months, our windows need to remain closed to lower the decibels with cooling breezes that would normally be welcome. It is relentless, and it is because the flagpole is 25 feet high, and it's very close to our property line. The allowable size of the flag itself is also not regulated, so the pole sways dangerously in storms from the weight. Upward lighting pollutes the residential night sky and shines into our bedroom windows. I am not suggesting people shouldn't fly flags on flagpoles. We fly one ourselves. Our flag is on a six-foot flagpole attached to the house. But beyond a certain size and installed in a permanent foundation, it becomes a structure, and without setback and height restrictions, it negatively impacts abutting neighbors, and it needs regulation. So as I said, when neighbors are not reasonable neighbors on their own, ordinances are meant to provide relief. State law includes flagpoles as structures in its definition, and many Massachusetts communities explicitly include flagpoles as structures, or, as Joel said, restrict them to a certain height, not 30 feet high, which is certainly arbitrary and not used by any other city in the Commonwealth. Even Linfield, a town whose legal case has been referenced by Gloucester officials when discussing this topic, now lists flagpoles as structures in its definition. There are two pending legal matters that I know of regarding flagpoles in Gloucester, one of which is ours, and we will keep fighting to reclaim the calm and beauty of our property. Thank you.
Any other comments?
My name is Michael Fady, and I'm here today, and I am speaking on behalf of the clients here. Just want to make only a couple of points. First and foremost, in June of last year, not this year, last year, the neighbors to them decided to construct a flagpole. It's not 30 feet high, it's just 20 feet high. It has all the characteristics, however, of the flagpole that's adjacent to you. All the noise, everything. I notified Mr. Vacari that it had been installed. He said, well, you have to do what you have to do. So we filed a complaint with his office that this had been installed without permits, no permits, nothing, and it is almost immediately on the property line, and it makes a real racket, and the lights on it overwhelm the house and windows, bedroom windows, et cetera. Now, subsequent to that time, Mr. Vacari told me he was going to send somebody out, we insisted, he would send somebody out from his crew and would look at it and make a determination, because we made an awful lot of allegations about the noise, what it was, et cetera. The person who was sent out was not Mr. Vacari, he sent out one of his people who works for him, and that person got back to us and me and said, well, it's definitely a problem. That's the last we heard about it. And Mr. Vacari, when I questioned him, I said, I thought there was a problem here. No, we're not doing that. He's taken that position, that it's not a structure, and he's not doing anything about it. And now we're a full year and a half past that time. Anyone who would even consider this as a situation to create, and who went out and looked at this and heard it, and it flapping in the wind and going like this and this all over the place, would just say, no, this is ridiculous. And it is ridiculous. It's unfathomable that some... It's unfathomable that someone, and he is not qualified, very frankly, Mr. Vicari, to make a decision or carry the water for the person that he's carrying the water for. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Anybody else like to speak for or against? Running out of people, Jason, to just hear for, if you like. The photos are terrific. Okay, thank you. There is somebody online. If we allow Beverly to speak.
Hello?
Yeah, we can hear you, Beverly. Thank you.
Beverly Palamachi, 8 Commonwealth Avenue. I agree with each person who just spoke. Anything that has a strong potential to create a nuisance to an abutter should be carefully considered and controlled. I don't know why it would be any other way. We all have to live next to each other, and we have to express, respect our neighbors. So I agree with each person and each thing they had to say. I think it's pretty straightforward. Thank you.
Thank you, Beverly. Hey, so I guess we got to learn about flagpoles. What's that? Yeah. Rob, did you want to make a comment after that testimonies?
Yeah, I'll make a couple of points. So basically, I'm not saying that they don't need building permits. The state law dictates flagpoles need a building permit. What we're asking for is that they don't need to meet the setbacks. Between myself, the zoning board, and legal, we have considered these as lawn accessories. It'd be no different than you putting a swing set in your yard that is fixed to the ground, doesn't require any zoning setbacks. Your mailbox is the same way. They don't require setbacks. A fence is the same way, they're fixed to the ground, there's a reason why it's under six feet. If, if you guys would like to change the height from 30 down to something else, I'd still be okay with that. It's just, I just don't believe that a flagpole should require zoning relief, you know, to a certain size. It's just, it, it doesn't make any sense to me. I understand the building permit application, sure, it's considered, if they want to consider a structure, the state does, that I understand. But I'm asking for a zoning change to do with setbacks, not a building permit.
Thank you, Rob. Comments from board members?
I must say, I found the arguments against, particularly from Attorney Faenza, and those that echoed what he said, pretty compelling. And, and also just the notion of, of respecting neighbors, and that's, and I'll follow that with, that's why we have setbacks, that's one of the reasons we have setbacks, among others, so that a new structure that's put in place needs to have, if it's, if it's not in compliance, the, the permission, as it were, of your neighbors by going through the DVA. So I, I am not in favor of this proposal personally.
Beverly, any comments? You can say no.
Well, I'm, I'm confused, because if it's defined as a structure by the state, what are we doing with this? How does this comply with state definitions? I just, I just not quite sure what we're talking about.
Yeah, and I, I'm confused, too, because I think I'd like to understand better how flagpoles have been treated for the past 20 years, if there's been nothing in the ordinance about them. And Rob shaking his head, I'm not sure why. And then I need to think more about if we were to regulate them, you know, what an appropriate, I, I've never looked at a flagpole thinking about how tall it really is. So I, I would need to look at the flagpoles, I think.
And by the way, the comparison to a swing set, swing set doesn't fly across the property line. If it falls, it doesn't flap. I mean, it's, it's probably not a good corollary. I think we should look at flagpoles on their own merits.
Where'd it go? Obviously, recuse from this. Okay, still. So again, I think that, so I have two flagpoles on my commercial property. I've never contemplated them as structures until one of them fell over, and then it became an issue, and we fixed it. But I think we need to, and again, I think the, you know, to reiterate the sort of disconnect between mass general law and, and local zoning, you know, that, that's confusing to me as well. So I think we need to take a little bit deeper dive into this and better understand it. I guess the only thing that I would caution folks in the room is that anything that, you know, preexists the zoning change is effectively grandfathered, right? So that I don't know that there's a cease and desist, or take the thing down, or move it, or get it re-permitted, but that's, that's above my pay grade. But, but I think it warrants a deeper dive, and we're happy to do that work and, and see if we can't find a reasonable solution to the problem. And David, do you have any comments? You're hiding behind. Rob?
I, I found, as Steve did, the Attorney Faenza's arguments against this compelling. I would tend to lean that way.
The only thing that I'll add, and, and I can certainly do more research, and you could also ask for, you know, some guidance potentially from the legal department, if they've been working on this as well. If you look across ordinances across the Commonwealth, there are a lot of ordinances that make exceptions for flagpoles, that they don't have to follow setback requirements. They, 20 feet is a very common theme as well, in, in terms of, of what also would not have to, to meet a setback. So it doesn't mean that just you look over your shoulder at other communities and it's the right answer or the wrong answer. Obviously, there's, there's folks that have been significantly impacted by the installation of some flagpoles. We can't pick our neighbors. And then sometimes that's what the regulations are there for, is to try to, you know, kind of mediate these types of issues before they can be, before they occur. But I, I think there is a very common theme that they, they're fairly unaddressed in terms of, of how they've been treated in other communities. So it's, it's a, it's a difficult issue to resolve.
I think also, we have two separate issues here, because actually, all we're being asked to do is, is recommend or not recommend the proposed amendment in front of us. A separate issue would be to come up with a, a separate flagpole ordinance. So by not recommending this, you know, if, if nothing were to change after the ordinance made its way through the process, flagpoles would be continued to be treated as they have in the past 10 years, however that is, or not. And then again, the second issue would be whether we wanted to regulate flagpoles in another way. But that's not the question before us today. So I don't know where that leaves us, having said that.
I think it's appropriate to sort of understand what Greg alluded to, and we need to do some homework. So it's my suggestion to continue this to our December 6th meeting, 4th, sorry, and we'll learn about flagpoles.
It's ladies' night downtown on December 4th.
So you get an early start.
So you're really, you're really cut into my ladies' nighttime.
So we can move it to a different date if you want to.
No, no, it's fine. I trust all of you.
Start the meeting at 4 o'clock. Start the meeting at 4 o'clock.
Maybe. No, oh yeah, oh yeah, we do.
Yeah, just one second, Jane. Mrs. Tibbetts? Yeah.
Wanted to add one more thing, and the one thing that I think we haven't really spoken about very much is, if you take away the zoning, you're taking away the safety. So what I would like you all to think about is the safety of your neighbors. Remember, we live in Gloucester, we have a lot of wind, we're in flood zones. If you, I've driven around Gloucester, we've gone by boat, we've gone by land, we've looked at people's flagpoles. Generally, neighbors are very courteous, courteous to their neighbors, they're considerate of the children and the pets next door. But when you come across an incident and call it a non-structure, then you're coming up with a safety factor. So I kind of wanted you guys to really look in the safety aspect of this, as opposed to the flagpole. So thank you very much.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Are we in, yeah, we're in a public hearing. So you want to continue the public hearing?
Want a motion to continue the public hearing to a date to be determined, or, or December 4th.
Okay. And are we having a meeting on December 18th?
We do not have one scheduled on the board's calendar. You are welcome to hold a special meeting if you chose to do so.
No. Just catch up with my friends after they've already eaten and I'll starve. Don't worry. Yeah, I'm gonna get my tiny violin out. Okay, I move, to keep things going, that we continue the public hearing for the Gloucester Zoning Ordinance Section 6 definitions by amending the definition of structure to add flagpoles under 30 feet in height to our next scheduled meeting of December 4th.
A motion by Jane Ramsen. I need a second, please.
Second.
Second by Steve Yost. Need a roll call vote, please.
Member Noonan?
Yes.
Member Ramsen?
Yes.
Member Bookin?
Yes.
Member Rosen?
Yes.
And member Yost?
Yes.
We're on to minutes.
We need Doug.
Doug. Jason, if Doug's out there, could you send him back? Thank you. Thanks, guys. Appreciate the input. Thank you, Michael. It's nice to see you in front of us again. There he comes out of the dugout. There he is. There he is.
So do the minutes you're about to show incorporate the comments that I already made? Great.
There's some funny formatting and stuff, but I'll get it corrected. Okay, so we're looking at September 4th of 2025. Page one. scrolling, thank you. September 4th.
So Beverly was, you're, you're on this.
That looks good to me.
Okay. Any modifications to September 4th? Mary Noonan will accept the motion.
I move that we approve the minutes of September 4, 2025.
Second.
We have a motion by Jane Ramsen, second by Steve Yost. Roll call vote, please.
Member Noonan?
Yes.
Member Ramsen?
Yes.
Member Bookin?
Uh, what do I say? I wasn't there.
Oh, you're, you abstained.
Abstained. I, I just couldn't remember.
Yep. Member Cook?
Yes.
Member Rosen?
Yes.
Member Yost?
Yes.
So 11/6/2025 is next up.
So if you just pause there, I just wanted to make sure that we got this right, and that that was a fair summary of what Suzanne Egan said.
Having discussed it with her but not being present, that was the gist of it, yes.
Okay. Do we need that whole long motion?
I think it's fine to include it.
Okay. Yeah. Great job. Yep.
Any comments on November 6th?
I move, oh.
None for me.
Yeah. Go ahead, Jane.
I move that we approve the member, the member, the minutes of November 6th, was it, 2025?
Yeah. We have a motion by Jane Ramsen, second by Beverly Bookin. Need a roll call vote, please.
Member Noonan?
Yes.
Member Ramsen?
Yes.
Member Bookin?
Yes.
Member Cook?
Yes.
Member Rosen?
Yes.
Member Yost?
Yes.
Nice to see you, David.
We have to.
Yes, we do.
Ah, one last issue. Site visit.
Oh, yeah. Do we all need to go together? I mean.
However you would like to.
Because I just kind of need to walk on the street and see what the house numbers that can, you know, form with the proposal.
I think it would be helpful to go together, but.
Certainly do, can certainly do that. Did you want to try to do this next week before Thanksgiving?
If we're gonna get it done before the December 4th meeting, we would have to do it, right, early.
Or the, or the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday of the following week, but.
Do we have another week in there?
Yeah. Maybe after Thanksgiving.
So Thanksgiving, and then we have the meeting on the 4th.
I know, but Thanksgiving is, right, so if we don't try to do it before Thanksgiving, or we do it after Thanksgiving, we really only have one, the first, second, and the third?
Yes.
Yeah.
Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday of that following week.
Yeah.
So we can, we can, let's just look at the weather app. Are folks traveling next week? It looks like. Monday is 50 and sunny, and then Tuesday and Wednesday are rainy. So Monday looks like a good day, if that works for folks.
I have a doctor's appointment at 1:00, but I could probably make it by 2:00 or 2:30, 2:30. You know, we want to go while it's still light.
I'm, I'm flat out all that day.
Okay.
Sorry. Did you say Tuesday was yucky?
Um, Tuesday, looks like Tuesday morning, maybe? There's, there's rain that comes in later in the day, so possibly Tuesday morning.
Tuesday works.
I could do Tuesday morning.
We could also make a call on Monday. If it looks like it's gonna be miserable, then we'll, then we'll shoot again for something in the following week.
Set a time on, on Tuesday.
10:00? Does that work?
Earlier is better.
9:00?
How early are people willing to do it?
Early's good for me.
Early's fine with me. I'm, I'm giving up my favorite yoga class.
Yeah.
Well, I kind of am, too, honestly.
So, okay.
What time is the?
David, Steve and I are all in the same yoga.
Let's go to the gym first and do this second. That's fine. 10 is good. We can all exercise before that.
Weekend, that's true.
10 is good?
10.
Okay. 10 o'clock on Tuesday, the 20.
Set a place to meet. I mean, don't, I mean, it's.
Yeah. We can park at the parking, playground, and then we'll walk. Sure. I was in a map with a pin.
Yep. Okay.
You should never give up yoga for planning board. It's a well-known established fact.
Motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
So we motion by Jane Ramsen to adjourn, seconded by Steve Yost. Roll call vote, please.
Member Noonan?
Yes.
Member Ramsen?
Yes.
Member Bookin?
Yes.
Member Cook?
Yes.
Member Rosen?
Yes.
Member Yost?
Yes.